Good evening, everyone. It is 6:00 PM on March 11th, 2024, and I'd like to call the City Council meeting to order. We'd like to begin by inviting Pastor Deborah Timmon to Thasbury Church to come forward for the invocation.
Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you so much for this day that you have made. We thank you so much, Lord, for this meeting, for the council members, and for the people of this great city of Madison. Bless us all individually and collectively. We pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. And we'd like to ask Rowan McHale to come forward to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
But you can come up here one day.
Maybe. Okay. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Rowan. Good job, Rowan. Go complete. Mayor Finley?
Here.
Councilmember Robleski?
Here.
Councilmember Spears? Sorry. Councilmember Powell?
Here.
Councilmember Shaw?
Here.
Council President Bartlett?
Here.
Councilmember Denzine?
Yes.
Councilmember Seifert?
Here.
Do we have any amendments to the agenda?
No, ma'am.
Very good. Next, we have approval of minutes number 2024-04-RG.
They're approved. Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? Ready for vote? Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Council President Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, we have public comments. They are limited to three minutes per speaker. When you approach the data, please state your name and the district where you live. We will begin with Judy Miller, who has turned in a comment card. Ms. Miller, would you like to come forward?
Thank you. I am bringing a request for an addition to the sidewalk. I requested that short sidewalk from Dublin Village to the Arlington Shopping Plaza. I wanted that sidewalk because, as I've said before, we're actually in an oasis. There is no sidewalk speeding anywhere. With that sidewalk, we could get to several businesses like the Sunrise Donut Shop, Yum Yum, the Crickets Restaurant, and the Paul Mitchell's Duty School. In addition, I just realized that if we could get to that parking lot, we could get to those lovely new sidewalks that were added when we're all trying to sell them. Those expanded. Then I could get down to Papa Jack's Clean It Store and actually buy a gallon of milk or a loaf of bread. We're actually in a food desert. There is no store around there that has anything fresh. So I very much like you to consider this an urgent request. We do need it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council?
I'm Margie Daly, Karen's District. First of all, I'd like to thank Steve. I got a tour of the community center. It's very impressive. It was a lot of money, but it's very impressive. I would like to mention that, you know, it's sad when the constituents attend more council meetings than their council people. And I've noticed that my neighborhood really has a lot of issues going on with the traffic lights, no ADA compliant sidewalks, and I think that our area, our district, has suffered greatly because our council person has neglected us. The traffic lights on used roads are still not synchronized. That's like a year and a half now. I see here Resolution 2024-055. There was another car accident. And I believe the insufficient lighting that's been, I've been addressing for a year and a half, where we sent in all the street names that they're insufficient since the Cobra lights were taken out, which hung right in the middle of the streets so that, you know, you could see. And these LED lights that blind 40% of the people, the constituents, anyone that has astigmatism, children under two years old. So I don't understand why nobody's working on that. Yet we're sending three people to that, the registered global progressive lobbying group, the Alabama League of Municipalities. The citizens have to pay for three reps to go there, plus travel. And then 2024-77, we are condemning that private property. And I'm noticing that the council has chosen to usurp the law by hiring consultants instead of following the law on some of these things. Then the 2024-73, another software program for the recreation department. Then another contract for janitorial services, that's 071. And then 084, we're going to hire a coach for pickleball. But we can't get sidewalks, ADA compliance, traffic lights. We are ignoring the health and safety of the constituents for the good of the few and ignoring our needs, our health and safety. I mean, when are we going to do something about these lights? Is that it? We've got to live with these lights? That you can't, I don't go out at night because I can't drive in the dark with them because I have astigmatism. And I'm one of 33% of the people that when you see it, it's like a bunch of razor lights coming at you. And that's why people drive into lakes and three fatalities.
Ms. Staley? Is there anyone else who would like to address the council? Please come forward. State your name. Being done, we will close public comments and move to the Consent Agenda and Finance Committee report. Great evening, folks. For comments?
I forgot. The Finance Committee has met and reviewed all the current periodic bills to be paid and found everything to be in order. With that, I'd like to move to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion second. Any discussion?
I just have one question, and that's on letter F, where somebody during the ice storm collided with a public works vehicle. Is that person that hit our public works vehicle, are they responsible for some payment of this as well? Since it would have been their fault?
It will be, Mara. That will, our insurance will subrate with that insurance vehicle once they get started working the claim. That has been their standard method of action.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any other questions? Ready for vote? Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Council President Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Hey, real quick, I would like to point out Senator Tom Butler gave us $2,500 for the Madison Center, Madison Center. May I ask you for that for him?
Thank you for pointing that out. And presentation and reports beginning with Mayor Finley.
Okay, a couple of things. One, mid-year budgets. We're still almost finalized to those, working with Roger. Thank you to the department heads to be able to get that to the Finance Committee hopefully by the middle to end of this week. So you guys can have that. Did receive a couple of letters from, it's the Hippie Home Visitor Group. And they gave a huge shout out to our firefighters. I've got a lot of them in the backpack here. That took the time to give a fantastic teaching demonstration and tour to our Madison City Schools hippie group. That's preschool families, not like hippie hippies. And they're very welcoming, did a fantastic job, and had a couple of different emails from folks on those. And then the Civic Awareness Academy is moving forward. We will have a full class. And excited to have that in place, and it'll start in a couple of weeks. With that said, that's all I have.
Thank you, District One.
Yes, it's been a quiet couple of weeks, but did want to give a shout out to the United Way, Kathy Miller, the Executive Director, for inviting me to come and read Across America. Many thanks to Principal Jamie Golliver and Ms. Quickle's third grade class at Madison Elementary. Had a great time, read a book about animal rescue called Philippe and Claudette, and gave it five stars on Goodreads. So check out that book if you have children or grandchildren. It was a fun read and a fun morning. And that's all I have.
District Three?
None of business.
Four?
How you doing?
Six.
All right. First, I would like to thank Steve. He gave me a tour of the community center last Monday. I really appreciate it. I learned a lot. It is very impressive. I just want to read through a few of the things that, nobody's really talked about what's going on in there. But there is going to be a very nice music room. There's art and sewing rooms. There's two ceramic studios with a shared kiln. There's several multipurpose rooms. There's meeting and conference rooms. There's a cafeteria. There's woodshop. There's fitness rooms. There's a game room. There's a gym that can accommodate special needs. There's a community garden. There's a courtyard. And there's 30 acres of green space for outdoor recreation, along with an outdoor performance area. So it's amazing what they have done with the space that was there. There's lots of windows to look out. Lot of ways. And the reason I know a lot of people are talking about it's a lot of money and stuff, is I always look at it as a way for the community people to get together and to build relationships and to build a community. That's why I've supported this. I think it looks great. Also, we were told that it's going to be opening in August, which I was quite surprised to hear at the time. Seems like it's coming up fast. But I would like to thank you for putting together that community center in the way it is. Thank you. Next thing, I had a business, I went to the board meeting for the Madison Visionary Partners last March 6th. And I just want to remind everybody that they are hosting the Second Annual Community Volunteers Award Breakfast. It's going to be March 28th at 8:00 AM over at the Sports Med Club at Toyota Field. And there, the breakfast is going to recognize Madison's volunteers. And I've been given permission to read who the volunteers are that were nominated this year. For the Youth Volunteer of the Year is Andrew Cocker, Savannah Gardner, and Finley Kowalski. For the Community Volunteer of the Year is Michelle Hyman, Denise Phillips, and Sandy Weisner. For the Philanthropic Business Person of the Year, there's Christie Clark of Captured by Christie, there's Matt Gibson by Gibson's Orthodontics, and Alice Lesman for Singling. So these are just all wonderful people that have put so much into our community. So I just wanted to recognize them as a council, and good luck to all of them for that. But anybody that wants to go, tickets are available still, and just go to the website to purchase them. And all the money from the breakfast goes to help the citizens of the community. Next topic, business, excuse me, Madison Police Citizen Advisory Committee. They have decided, instead of meeting every month, to meet once every other month. And their next meeting is this coming March 26th. It's coming Tuesday, not tomorrow. Big problem. The end of, March 26th at 6 o'clock, okay? It's going to be at the St. Matthew's Episcopal Church. So instead of always having it in the same place, it didn't really work well having it here. Hasn't really been that well because a lot of people participating at the library either. So now they're trying to get out into the community more, so maybe people will come if they feel that it's in their community more. So the first one is going to be at the St. Matthew's Episcopal Church on Hughes. And the topic is going to be mental health. The speaker is going to be from getting real about mental illness. And they'll be offering lots of insights into this. It's an important topic. I know people don't really like to talk about it, but it's such a need throughout the community to address this. So I really appreciate that they're taking that on. And then they'll be meeting May, July, September, and November this year. One last thing I have to share with you, Beautification Board. They are going to do a spring cleanup for 2024. And the Beautification Board is now have a young man, Terry Odom, who has been working very hard. He has just stepped up and taken this on. And it's so great to see somebody just come into an organization and say, hey, let's just do this. The event is going to raise litter awareness and provide opportunities for residents with a willing spirit to help keep our city a clean and beautiful place to live. Neighbors, church members, civic clubs, students, scouts, businesses, and others are invited to put their civic pride into action by volunteering for just a couple of hours to help safely clean up the litter along our roadways, parks, and greenways. There's going to be several events going on during the month of April. The Board's Pride of Madison team will provide guidance, safety vests, litter sticks, and trash bags for these events. And for residents that just can't make it to any of those, they're going to be providing the same things. Exactly where hasn't been, I'll have to tell you our next meeting where you can pick those up yet. But all these things are just wonderful. Again, ways to get the community involved in doing something productive for our citizens. And I just think that's great. And that's all I have. Thank you.
District Seven?
Just a couple of things. I wanted to thank Parks and Rec, specifically Stephanie Elmore, but taking, jumping in this year in the shoes of Kelly Johnson, supported by Cory for the basketball season. The mayor put out in his email this past week, you know, the season just completed. Lots of games. I'm not going to go over all the numbers that you had, but lots of games, lots of coordination that was done across city facilities, as well as the majority of those being the schools. So appreciate all that teamwork, Cory, that your folks put in, and if you can pass that long appreciation there. Everything went without a hitch. I don't, I know any of the games I was at, I never saw a parent having to be escorted out or a kid. So it was, it was good. Also, just point out tomorrow night, there's a little baseball game down across Interstate. A team out of Troy that's going to take on our Auburn Tigers. So we'll see what happens there. And apparently in a couple of weeks, I think there's a team, the other team in the state might be playing. I don't remember who that is, but they'll be playing too. You know, we'd appreciate your support, I guess, at that game as well. So, but other than that, that's it.
Okay, thank you. I have Resolution Number 2024-078-R with one correction. And I don't know, Brian, if it's you or Lisa that's going to do this, but under Section One, the voting delegate should be Connie Spears, not me. And then under Section Two, Mara should be the first alternate voting delegate. Okay? And with that correction, entertain a motion in a second.
Move to approve. Second.
Okay, motion and second. Any discussion? Ready for vote? Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Council President Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Council President Denzine, I'm sorry, Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
And the motion passes. Now, the resolution under item B is postponed until our next work session. We had planned to have a work session tonight at 5:00, but we had to cancel that. And when we schedule that work session, we will then put that motion on for the next agenda. Next, we have public hearings. Any wrong? We've got one item.
Good evening. The Department has one public here, has one item for a public hearing this evening. It is Resolution Number 2024-081-R, which is a request for an on-premises beer and wine license from Savage Holdings Sales fee doing business as Lost Pizza Company located at 181 Hughes Road. The reason that this business is applying for an on-premises beer and wine license at this time is that it is a new business in the city of Madison. Everything is in order for the City Council to consider this request.
Okay, if we're going to open public hearings, anyone can speak. It has five minutes. Please state your name and your district that you live in.
Margie Daly, oh, you took it down? We couldn't see where it was. Could you put the map back up?
It's right over there. Literally right.
Right there.
Right. First business on the right, behind the-
The first business on the right, oh, like-
Like, right there.
Oh, by my neighborhood.
Yes.
Okay.
To have pizza.
Oh, it's going to be, that's the pizza place. Okay. So are they going to just serve beer and wine, not alcohol, liquor? Okay. And have we gotten a list? It seems we get a couple of liquor licenses every couple of meetings. Have we compiled a list or a map yet of the liquor licenses?
Is there anything else you need to direct or comment to the council?
Excuse me?
Do you have anything else?
I have a lot, but no, I'm just curious if we're ever going to get the map of where the liquor license is and reinstate the part about the schools not being next to a liquor license.
So the mayor's school is 1.1 miles.
Yeah, but we used to have an ordinance that kept liquor licenses away from schools. And that, you guys took that away from us.
We didn't take anything away.
The council did. They sure did.
The council did, but it was years ago. I remember.
It wasn't us. Well, some of yous. What year did they take the school zone? We no longer have a school zone to eliminate liquor licenses and other businesses near schools that shouldn't be.
Maybe 2013, 14. It's been a while. I couldn't tell you the exact-
The state AVC board took away the school zone? That was an ordinance?
All the alcohol stuff?
Yeah.
They approved the license? That's some of the stuff she's saying.
Order. So they have to approve that license. They have to bring it to her. Then it comes to us, and then we approve that license. So it's a joint thing. So, but they have to approve it before we-
First, and then we just-
Correct.
Grant it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, we will close public hearings. Retain the motion in a second. Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion by Robleski, second. By Powell. Any questions? Ready for vote? Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Council President Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, Vaughn.
Thank you.
Any other reports? Court.
Good evening. This Resolution 2024-83-R is approval to enter into an agreement with Madison County to utilize their worker's program again. We last entered that agreement in 2019, but had to cease that due to COVID regulations.
Move to approve.
Okay.
Any motion, second. Any questions? Ready for vote? Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Council President Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, first I have Resolution Number 2024-068-R, authorizing a commercial aid to construct agreement with Athens Utilities for relocation of power lines for the Burgreen Huntsville Brown's Ferry Roundabout not to exceed $228,510.64 to be paid from the engineering department budget.
Move to approve. Second.
Special counsel, Ms. Shaw, any questions?
I just have one. Is this something that's new, or is this something that we budgeted for?
We budgeted for this.
We did, okay. I just didn't remember seeing this.
We budgeted at the beginning of this project for this year about a quarter of a billion dollars for utility relocation projects. It's also within that estimate.
Okay, thank you. Okay, ready for vote? Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Council President Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Councilmember Denzine? Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, next I have Resolution Number 2024-075-R. This is authorizing amendment number one with GMC on the Mill Creek Ditch Project for a no-ride certification. This is in the amount not to exceed $5,500.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion, second. Any questions? Ready for vote? Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye. He's first, too.
He's been in the sun.
He said aye. Okay. Council President Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Ms. Mathis, next.
All right, next I have Resolution Number 2024-076-R. This is authorizing amendment number one with Nivens and Associates Appraisals on the Seagulls Mesa Drive Road Extension and Widening Project for revision to the appraisals for Prussells Four and Five. This is $400.
Move to approve. Second.
Okay, motion, second. Any questions? Ready for vote? Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Council President Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears? Council, I mean, Councilmember Shaw? Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Finally, I have Resolution Number 2024-077-R, authorization for the acquisition of two additional right-of-ways and a temporary construction easement for the Seagulls Road and Mesa Drive project.
Move to approve. Second.
Okay, motion, second. Any questions? Ready for vote? Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Council President Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Councilmember Shaw?
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Facilities and grounds.
The Civic Affairs Department has two resolutions for your consideration. Resolution 2024-071-R, awarding a contract to Vouchen Group to provide janitorial service and optional services to the Madison Public Library and Wellness Center.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion, second. Any questions? Ready for vote? Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Council President Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Councilmember Shaw?
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next.
Resolution 2024-086-R, awarding a contract to Janet Keane to provide janitorial service and optional services to the community center to be paid for out of the facility budget.
Move to approve. Second.
Okay, motion, second. Any questions?
I was just going to add one thing. I thought it was interesting in there that it's listed as a possible future voting site. So that would possibly relieve some of the burden we have at the church on Balch, whose name I'm missing, but-
Are they local?
Those are in church.
In church?
Yes. No, not Safe on Gillespie, the one on Balch. So I just wanted to throw that out there, that you've planned for it to possibly be a voting site, and I think that's great.
You're talking about Madison Baptist?
Madison Baptist, that's it.
Okay, we have motion in a second. Move to approve. I think we already have one.
Oh, we did. Okay, that's right.
Seifert.
That's right. We're good.
Okay, ready for vote? Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Council President Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Councilmember Shaw?
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Planning.
We have Resolution Number 2024-082-R, and this is to approve a professional services agreement with Arc Space Studio, which is an architectural firm in the amount of $14,724. And this is related to the Wond House and the next phase of services, which is going to be to evaluate a floor plan for the future repurposing of the structure, to evaluate material- materials, lift a roof, et cetera.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion, second. Any questions?
So this kind of gives us an idea of what... Once they do that, we can get an idea of cost, or what it would take?
Yes, this does include a more detailed structural evaluation. There will be an additional cost. If you'll recall at your work session, we talked about a total of about $16,500. This is less than that. So we'll need to have somebody come in and remove some of the ... Some of the structure on the inside, little sections, so that the structural evaluation can be done. But yes, that's the... One of the goals of this exercise.
Yeah, I've had questions about exactly what is this going to be used for? You say we're going to repurpose it. What exactly is the city...
We've talked about this becoming a local historic museum, like a period home museum. You see those in a lot of communities where the portion of the building is furnished, the way a family would have lived, sticking the period. That all would have to be decided. Then there would be, if you recall from the master plan that you all looked at, there'd be a visitor's entrance in the back. There could potentially, in the future, be some type of exhibit gallery space. You can... There's a place in the house where you could have rotating exhibits, talking about different aspects of Madison's history. So that would be the concept, which, again, we'll be checking with council as we go forward, learning about what would be involved to get this project to move forward, and then you can decide if you want to continue to proceed.
Okay. What age is the house going?
The house is the sixth oldest in... Well, it's one of, I guess, 1898 is the date on the placard, so it's the sixth oldest house in the city. There are handful that are a little bit older. Most of those are on Church Street. However, so we think of the house as built in the Victorian era. However, that front porch is definitely a craftsman home. And so one of the things that we would decide is what period that house would be. I think it would probably end up going probably in the thirties, around the time of World War II, only because we found a lot of paperwork related to that time period, and it would be... You could tell some interesting stories with respect to that. And also, that's when the Farley family was there, and they ran the mill down on Mill Road, so there's lots of tie-ins. But that all has to be decided. The nice thing, I guess, about a structure like that that spans some decades and different architectural styles is you have an opportunity to talk about different aspects of the history of Madison and the greater area in that context.
Okay, so what we're approving tonight is just to get a general...
So what you're approving tonight is for the architect to work on a floor plan. If it were to be turned into a museum, what would that floor plan look like, which would purely only alter the back portion of the building. Also, to look at the appropriate exterior materials, as we discussed at your work session, the roof has to be replaced, and we want to proceed cautiously. We've taken out a material for that. One of the things we talked about is the fact that if the council decides it wants to move forward with this project, we probably apply for grants to assist with the funding. There are different grants out there for historic preservation. And we don't want this project to not qualify for a grant by picking a roof material that's convenient, but maybe not age-appropriate. So the architect's going to go through that process of determining what the right exterior materials would be, whether it be the siding or the roof. We also are looking at weatherization of the windows. That may be a short-term solution to make it more weather tight. So we're going to be looking at the exterior materials, looking at the floor plan, determining on a roof material. And then the final piece that the mayor was asking about is that structural evaluation. We had a preliminary structural evaluation done when you guys approved the first contract. I'm just kind of taking a look, you know, at the House Office Foundation kind of big-picture stuff. And so now that structural engineer is going to come in and take a closer look and make specific recommendations that would then translate into a set of construction documents. We're not authorizing the preparation of those construction documents yet, because that would be council's next step, potentially, or maybe the fourth step. But we need to have enough information so that we can then get some educated quotes, so you all have a sense of what the next round of costs would be for the project.
Thank you.
We have enough money to do this work, to replace the roof, to do some weatherization of the windows, and this was all discussed at the last work session. But that's as far as we would go at this point.
Okay. I'm glad you're looking at grants. Okay, thank you.
Ready for vote? Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Council President Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears? Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunzeen?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Police?
Molly's coming up. Mary Beth, thank you for Hughes Plaza. And now that you've added a pizza place to it, you've kind of just knocked it out of the park. I mean, I can remember what that looked like only five years ago, and the difference it's across the street over there right now, which is pretty cool. So thanks. Each of this is like icing to the cake.
Yes.
Number one.
Number one, sir.
I have resolution number 2024-072-R, and it's to award a bid to Troy Industries to purchase patrol rifles in the amount of $71,435. We will be trading in the rifles, the older rifles we currently have, so we'll be able to recover some of that cost as well.
Next.
And the reason for, again, the older rifles, and this allows us to standardize and modernize what we've got.
Okay, move to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion, second. Any questions? Ready for vote? Councilmember Dunzeen?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Council President Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears? Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, Keith.
Thank you.
Recreation.
Favorite person? He's right. Oh, he remembers. I have resolution 2024-073-R, amendment to transfer RecTrac Recreation Software Server to a cloud-based service by Vermont Systems. This is our registration software and our membership software. We're twenty versions behind the latest version, so we're due for an upgrade. We moved all our data off the city servers and put them into a cloud-based system. And it'll also have an app, which we've been requested for, for people that like to sign up on their phones and that kind of thing. And then another thing people will be interested in is it'll have a queue system. We used to open, like, some lesson registration, and everybody'd get on at once and try to register and crash the system. But it'll remember what place you are in line and do it in a fair order, which is a lot of complaints off of my desk.
Mm-hmm.
Anyway.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion, second. Any questions?
Cory, is there any training that needs to go along with this, or anything?
Oh, no, it's... No, I think Chris has got it from the IT end of it, and it'll help us a lot, just being updated with...
Okay.
With how registration is done.
Any idea how long it'll take to kind of get it in place once you have it updated?
I don't... Chris, do you know the answer to that? Yeah.
And one of the things we'll do is tie it together with communications and put together information on, once the upgrade's done, what can... What functionality can be added? You know, it's a big deal for our citizens, especially from a mobile standpoint, which gives them the ability to sign up, frees his folks up, but it also gives them a lot of flexibility. So we'll make sure we put that out.
Less than ten years ago, we used to do every registration by paper. Now it's 100% digital.
Okay, ready for vote? Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Council President Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears? Councilmember Dunzeen?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Motion passes.
My second item's resolution 2024-084-R, authorizing a professional service agreement with Chris Welch for pickleball instruction. The high demand for... We do entry-level pickleball classes. He's been doing them for a while now. We're finally getting him under contract, and we'll offer some more pickleball programs, instructional programs and leagues.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion passed. Second by Roblesky. Any questions?
No, I'm just thrilled somebody's going to teach us how to play.
Yeah, I think he was one of them when you guys came out that night.
Mm-hmm.
It was a nice show.
I just wanted to point out, I actually saw on Facebook this past week, and some of us... Some of us will remember these guys' names, but Steve Avery and Kent Merker both are like pickleball phenoms. And anybody that may not know who that is, Steve Avery